I call the meeting order, please rise for its pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Present.
Alderman Logan.
Present.
Alderman Snow. Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Present.
Alderman Shuneman.
Present.
Alderman Kleckler.
Present.
Alderman Folsom. Alderman Sabaka.
Present.
Six present, you have quorum sir.
Thank you. Well, our first order of items on the agenda is a proclamation. You know, we always talk about the successes and stuff that we have here at the city and one of the first and foremost things that goes along with that success is the dedication of our employees to their respective jobs and what they do. And tonight, we're going to recognize one of our employees who, he will say it was the course of his normal day, that anybody would do it if they were in the same position, et cetera, but he went over and above his normal duty day to help someone that was in more than just a little bit of distress. The house was on fire and she was on the roof and needed to get down. So at this time, I would like the city clerk to read the proclamation that we have this evening honoring one of our own, one of our linemen from the electric department, Caleb Martin. So if you would sir.
Whereas Caleb C. Martin has been a member of the Rock Falls Electric Department in the position of lineman since February 12th, 2007, and will soon achieve 11 years of service to the department and the citizens of Rock Falls. And whereas on the morning of December 20th, 2017, at 9:32 a.m., the Rock Falls Fire Department and Sterling Fire Department were notified by Twin City Consolidated Dispatch Center of a structure fire with a heavy volume of fire coming from all windows and doors at the intersection of West Sixth Street and 11th Avenue in Rock Falls, with occupants thought to be trapped in the building. And whereas Caleb C. Martin, while traveling around the city on business for the electric department, saw a pillar of smoke in the sky and proceeded to investigate on the chance that if it were a structure fire, the electric department would most likely be called to disconnect service. Upon his arrival at the intersection of West Sixth Street and 11th Avenue, he was the first one on the scene and found a structure fully involved. Two occupants were out of the structure, standing in front of the residence, and then he noticed a woman on the roof at the east end of the structure with heavy fire and smoke conditions present. He proceeded to his truck and returned with a ladder, raising it to the roof and assisted the woman off of the structure to safety without hesitation. Therefore, in recognition of his heroic actions, the city of Rock Falls takes this occasion to honor those actions of Caleb C. Martin. In that light, he is hereby recognized for his unselfish act of courage under unusually difficult and dangerous circumstances outside of his normally assigned duties to an extraordinary degree, acting in a manner which truly resulted in saving the lives of others. Now therefore, it be proclaimed that the mayor, William B. Wescott, and the city council of the city of Rock Falls, Whiteside County, Illinois, do hereby honor Caleb C. Martin for his actions and demonstration of bravery and service to others without concern for his own safety, past the sixth day of February 2018.
Chair would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Mr. Logan?
Second.
Second, motion's been made and seconded to approve the proclamation that has been read into the record, recognizing the actions of Rock Falls Electric Department lineman Caleb C. Martin. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Caleb, would you step forward at this time so we can present you at the proclamation sir? Oh yeah, Caleb, you have a speech ready? Okay. Okay, at this time, we'll move to the next agenda item, audience request. I don't see anybody here for that. Community affairs, chamber's not represented. Next item on the agenda will be the consent agenda. There are three items on the consent agenda this evening. Any of the members choose to have any of those items removed for individual votes. Mr. Clerk.
Approval of the minutes of the January 16th, 2018 regular council meeting. Approval of the bills is presented. Approval of the renewal of the IDNR Hennepin Canal Lease Number 3146 for five years in the amount of $1,100.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Shuneman, seconded by Ms. Sabaka, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Six aye.
Thank you. Next item is ordinances for first reading. We have two items on the agenda this evening for first reading, sir.
Approval of ordinance 2018-2358 adding section 16-398 governing the removal of open wine bottles from restaurants. And approval of ordinance 2018-2359 amending section 32-1 utility office.
Chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the ordinances for first reading only.
So moved.
Mr. Logan?
Second.
Second by Mr. Shuneman. Both ordinances, 2018-2358 and 2018-2359 are in the motion for ordinance for first reading. Any additional questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry forward to second reading next meeting. Next item on the agenda is city administrator, Robin Blacker.
All right. First of all, anybody who would not like to have to sit through the meeting is welcome to leave anytime they would like.
Seriously, you wouldn't say?
All right, this is the same water and rate study that I presented at both the utility committees and the finance committee. We're just going to briefly go over this tonight, there is no action required. This will be presented in ordinance form for first reading at the next council meeting is, I believe, our timetable that we're looking at. In 2017, a waste, water and wastewater rate study was completed. There had not been one done since about 2008, which was done for the sewer plant construction and the EPA loan by Willett Hoffen and Associates. Rate studies should be done and it's an industry standard, no less than every five years, and there's a good reason why. There's fairness that's created. The operating and maintenance costs should be recovered from the customer classes in proportion to the cost of providing that service to those customers. In other words, you don't want your industrial customers to be supplementing your residential customers and vice versa. The impact on the customers, doing regular cost of service studies and smaller rate increases prevents what we call sticker shock to customers. If you wait a long time to do it and then you have to do a very large increase, that creates the sticker shock. Knowing our cost of service, long-term and short-term capital planning cannot be accurate without this information. Just doing our year-to-year budgeting, we have to be sure that we're covering our cost of service. The considerations in a rate study are our current debts, which are loans and/or bonds that we may have outstanding, current operational and maintenance costs, our cash position or what we would call reserves, our current rates and revenues, and our projected capital plans. For the sewer, they do have a 20-year capital plan that was done by Stanley for the CMOM, which was a requirement of our discharge permit. Water usually keeps at least a five-year capital plan, but as you guys know, capital plans change. Things come up, they have to change, but at least we're planning for what our capital expenses will be in the future. This is a copy of the line items on our current utility bill. These are the six line items that would be affected by this rate increase. Just to give you an idea of that, it's the water usage, water minimum charge, the water capital improvement, the sewer usage, the sewer minimum charge, and the sewer capital I think it's important, looking forward, that we look back at our historic O&amp;M revenues versus expenses. Projected for FY '18, and this is just for wastewater here, we are looking at approximately $100,000 shortfall this year. FY '17, we ended up between 90,000, about 90,000 to the good, but 42,000 of that was from settlement proceeds. The next two years, we were in the hole, those were significant factors, and FY '14 was the last time since '17 that we have seen, that we have ended up in the black. So we have problems there, we have made some adjustments, we've taken the crew down from five to four, hoping that would help. It did some, but it's really taken at least this past seven years of operation of the new sewer plant to find out what it actually costs to run the sewer plant. So our proposed four-year rate increase for wastewater, as you can see right now in FY '18, which we're in right now, we did have a 1.9 increase that went into effect May 1st of last year of 2017. What we're proposing is an 8.93 percent adjustment in FY '19, which would start May 1st, and a 3.9 the next year, a 3.94, and a 3.90 in FY 2022. And as you see, the wastewater treatment plant base charge did not change. It is the other three line items. The capital improvement makes a one-time adjustment the first year at 366 and stays there, and then the basic user charge and the commodity rates go up according to the percentage on the top of that. These are the non-metered, the outside city limits, and the industrial pre-treat customers. I did not put the percentages on there, I don't believe we were given those by UFS, but it is the flat rates that would be charged out to those customers. On the water side, our proposed four-year rate increase for the water is not, we don't have that big jump the first year like we do in the sewer. Those are, it's a flat 4.5 percent over the next five years. Again, the debt service charge does not change, it's the capital improvement charge, the basic user charge, and the commodity rate. And again, with the water, the capital improvement only makes a one-time adjustment here in this first year from 240 to 350, and then holds the remainder of the four years at 350. So this is all well and good, but people always want to know, what does this mean for me as a customer? So since well over 50 percent of our current customers are at that monthly minimum of three units and under, I thought I'd start with those customers. And just so you guys know, a unit of water or a unit of sewer is 748 gallons. So with water, the first year with water, currently that customer would be paying $17.22, it would go up to $18.35. Sewer, $41.65 to $45.65. So over, so for a month, that first year, the average customer would see an increase of $5.13 a month. The second year, those customers would see an increase of $2.46 per month. The third year, it would be $2.33 a month, and the fourth year, it would be $2.73 per month. So I think it's important, and I told you guys at finance and the utility committee, those sheets I believe are important for the aldermen to know so you can answer questions when you're out in the community, exactly what that does mean for our residents and our rate payers in the community. So I would be happy to entertain any questions that you have at this time.
Just, and this is just a question to settle any confusion out there. This is a rate hike, not just for the sewage treatment plant, but for the entire sewage operation?
It's actually not for the sewage treatment plant, it's actually for the collection system, which entails the 11 lift stations, the, how many miles of sanitary and storm sewer do you have? Of each. So about 160 miles of pipe and the main lift, of course. It's actually for everything but the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, that's right. Any additional questions for Robin? I'll next.
All right, and again, the ordinance will come back to the committee, or to the council at the next council meeting. The second thing I have for you tonight is, as a recommendation of the personnel committee, approval of the job description for fiber outside plant supervisor.
Anybody have any questions, having had this in the packet, any questions on it?
I make a motion to approve the job description.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shuneman, seconded by Mr. Logan, to approve the job description for fiber outside plant supervisor as is being presented. Now, is there any additional questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Six aye.
Then, Your Honor, I'd like to, as approved and recommended by the utility committees, the utility committee, we have been working for several months on developing a list of policies. This is just the basic form, these will be expanded upon as we move forward. These are the policies so the full council is aware and has the guidelines of what the utility committee will be doing and what their responsibilities are. So we have these for approval by the full council, Your Honor.
I would make a motion to approve the utility committee policy manual.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Shuneman, seconded by Mr. Kuhlmeier, to approve the utilities committee policy manual. Excuse me, has any questions?
Your Honor, I'd just like to thank everybody on the committee, especially the new folks that are on there, the citizens. They're being hip, bombarded with a lot of information, and this is a result of a lot of collaboration, so I'd just like to thank everybody on the committee.
Sir, anyone else? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Six aye.
Your Honor, I just have one last thing. As everybody is aware, we did declare a snow emergency that started yesterday at noon and is running through noon tomorrow. However, we will wait to see how much snow we get tonight. If we get enough that warrants it, we may extend that snow emergency, so I would just ask that people either listen to the radio or look at Channel 5 or our Facebook or our website to see if that does get extended. And as a reminder to our residents, you know, the snow routes need to be cleaned off, do not park on the snow routes. If you do, Amy is out. She will be ticketing vehicles. We need to keep those snow, get those snow routes cleared. And as a reminder to the residents, especially when you have two days in a row where you're expecting snow, our street crews, you know, were out all night last night, they did the snow routes, then they work on the secondaries, and then the alleys are last. There are a few primary alleys that do get plowed with the secondaries, but most of those alleys won't get hit until after we see what the snow is tonight. So we have a very set way that they do the plowing and prioritize it, so just to remind our residents of that.
Anything else, ma'am?
That's all tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Dean.
I know that the mayor's been polling you to see if you were going to be attending the chamber dinner, but just a reminder, if you haven't let him know, please do, and look at your spot reserved there. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Sanders sitting in for Mr. Reeves. Anything from you, sir?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor, thank you.
Mr. Ferguson, thank you, switch sides in the room. Mr. Cox. Mr. Sanders.
I seek approval for, approval of the installation fee and a three-year contract from Federation Services Solutions, 3955 Northwestern Highway, Farmington Hill, Michigan, for Samser vehicle gateways to be installed on the city trucks in the amount of $46,270.
Move for a quick rule, Mr. Sanders.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Ms. Logan for the approval as presented. City attorney, you had a chance to view this and the works and corrections, and they've all been made now. Can you pass it with the final product?
There was a correction, I thank Mr. Simon for his prompt attention.
The motion's on the floor, and seconded for the approval of the installation fees for your contract for the Samser vehicle gateways to be installed on the city trucks in the amount of $46,270. Any additional questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Six aye.
Thank you. Chief Nelson? Mr. Sanders. Bill is recovering from this exciting day. Mr. Speaker is recovering. Thank you. That's how you ended up over there, I get it now.
You betcha, you betcha. You never know where you're supposed to sit. I'm asking for approval of the quarterly write-offs that have been gone through the utility, or yeah, utility committee and finance committee, in the amount of $15,348.41.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the write-offs these have, as the staff has said, gone through both the utilities committee as well as the finance committee.
I'll make a motion.
Second motion.
Motion by Ms. Sabaka, seconded by Ms. Shuneman, to approve the utility write-offs from 10/2017 through 12/2017 in the amount of $15,348.41. Any further questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Six aye.
Thank you very much.
Tourism. Oh, thank you for leaving space for Mr. Schaefer.
Broadband seeks approval to award the contract for Phase One service area fiber to the premise Jeepon Outside Plant Construction Project to the low bidder, Pretano Construction Company of 1766 Armored Drive, Addison, Illinois, in the amount of $1,925,330.47.
I would make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Shuneman, seconded by Mr. Logan, for the awarding of the low bidder, Pretano, for Phase One service for construction project in the amount of $1,925,330.47. Motion made, seconded, is there any discussion? Attorney Nunn, roll call please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Six aye.
Sir.
Seek approval to purchase inside plant fiber equipment from sole source provider, Walker and Associates, 7129 Old Highway 52 North, Welcome, North Carolina, 27374, in the amount of $241,988.4.
Okay, approve.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Ms. Logan, for the approval of purchase of fiber optic equipment from Walker and Associates, as a sole source provider, in the amount of $241,988.4. Any additional questions or comments? Roll call please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Six aye.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, sir, thank you. Ward reports, Mr. Reitzel. Thank you. Mr. Logan?
Nothing today, sir.
Mr. Kuhlmeier?
Nothing today, sir.
Thank you. Alderman Snow, if you're watching, hope you're feeling better. Stay away from all of us, please. Alderman Shuneman.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Alderman Kleckler. And Mr. Folsom's not with us tonight, and Lee, we're thinking about you and your wife during this time of her illness. Ms. Sabaka?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Mayor's report. Request, I'm going to be leaving town this Thursday and return on the 13th, so I would request with the council's consent, approve the appointment of Alderman Kuhlmeier to serve as mayor pro temp for the period of February 8th through the 13th of 2018. Motion by Mr. Reitzel, seconded by Ms. Sabaka. Any discussion? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Abstained.
Alderman Shuneman.
Aye.
Alderman Kleckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Five aye.
On your agenda, you had, I had asked Eric to put down February 20th as my stated city address. I'm going to tell you this evening, I'm going to change that to March 6th. My mother will be undergoing surgery on the 20th, and just in the far case that something would come up, I would just assume it went on the 6th and know we'll do it again. February 15th, Thursday, City of Rock Falls is hosting the Northern Illinois Mayor's Association Dinner at 6 o'clock at the Candlelight Inn, if any of you aldermen would like to attend with me. I currently have the distinct honor of being the president of the Northern Illinois Association, and every quarter, a different mayor takes on the sponsorship, or excuse me, the hosting of the meeting, and this is my month. So if anybody is interested in that, just let me know as soon as possible, and it'll be out here at the Candlelight Inn. Last thing I have is legislative updates. I hope that you all got your IML magazine, where you are now, and if you are getting your updates, IML, do you get your IML updates? We make sure we send that out. There's a lot of craziness being considered right now. In fact, on behalf of the council, I took the privilege of drafting a letter to Senator Anderson today in regards to Senate Bill 2260, where they're looking to, a bill has been presented, and it's going to come up for a vote in the Senate probably very soon, and that would be to remove $4.3 million from the CPPRT funds and take it away from the municipalities to be used for, as the language says, certain school districts. And as you may or may not know, for the city of Rock Falls, we get about, on the average, about $60,000 a year from the CPPRT fund, and back in '78, '76, '78, somewhere in there, there was provisions put into the Illinois Municipal Code that mandate that CPPRT funds have funds have to be used to what they call honor leagues. The first series of questions doesn't really apply to us. The second does, that in our case, it has to be used for IMRF pensions, fire pensions, police pensions, and if we were a city-run library, it could be used for that as well. We have, for the years that we have been receiving that, been putting aside about 8.7 percent of the $60,000 towards the IMRF, and then we in kind split up the other two towards the pensions. This will make the third attempt at reducing funding. If they're successful, because the LDGF has already been reduced, they have this year passed where they're going to be charging us an administrative fee from our sales tax that we should be getting, and now this. And in each instance, the revenues that they're pulling away from us are revenues which are important in our budgetary considerations. So I took the time today to send a letter to Senator Anderson, who's our representative, our senator, obviously, in asking him to oppose this bill, and if we could find out what certain school districts are entitled to the $4.3 million, the other school districts. And this is coming, scary part, this is coming out of the Senate Education Committee. So, who knows? But there's a lot of other bills that are up. Just because they're on the IML's radar and in our magazines, it doesn't mean that they're proven. Some of them are things that we really need to watch very closely, because they will affect us in one way or the other. We have nothing this evening for executive session. Mr. Folsom is not here, so...
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion's been made and seconded for adjournment.
All right.
You were pretty quick, man. They had to be, Rob was getting ready.
Walk me up.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.